Let's see, begin recording. Okay, so we'd like to welcome you to the webinar series, Public Hearing for the AMATIC Position Statement on Distance Education. We have Dan Petrick from the Innovative Teaching and Learning Committee here. Just a couple of comments, and I will turn it over to Dan. The views expressed by the presenter are not necessarily the views of AMATIC. Commercial products mentioned by presenters are not endorsed by AMATIC. We want to thank McGraw-Hill Higher Education as a sponsor for the 2019 AMATIC webinar series. And now I will move from this and put up the position statement. And I will turn it over to Dan for, if you want to introduce yourself, and I'll let you have the floor.
All right, thanks, Pat. I'm Dan Petrock. I'm from Des Moines Area Community College. I'm the Chair of the Innovation Teaching and Learning Committee, and I see Anne is also here from our committee. I'll tell you a little about myself, and Anne, then maybe if you want to let everybody know who you are and your background, because she's been a very active member, working on this position statement. So I've been teaching here at Des Moines Community College for about 15 years now, a former high school teacher. I am in my second term as ITLC Chair. Been pleasantly surprised at the process and the people on the committee and their diligence to work on this statements and others. This has been over two years, I think, we've been working on this. We had a draft many months ago, and it seemed to kind of stop moving forward at some point. Well, it got removed forward at last fall with the anticipation of bringing this position statement forward to this Fall Conference in Milwaukee. We've gone through at least 10 iterations on this, so this would be considered a major revision from the previous one. So we've had some public commenting within the ITLC group and many subcommittee meetings on it. But now we're ready to have the membership at large take a look at it to see if we can make it even better before we put it before the delegate assembly this fall. So that's a little bit about me. Anne, do you want to just say something a little bit about you, since you've been participating a lot in this?
Sure. I'm Anne Magnuson. I've been at Wake Tech teaching full-time since 2007. I'm now also in administration, so I'm a foot in both worlds, but I still teach currently online calculus. I've been teaching online for about 15 years, most of them here at Wake Tech. And Wake Tech is a very strong online program. We have an online initiative called Epic that you may have heard about. So it's kind of a passion of mine, and so I really enjoyed working on this statement.
Thank you. So yeah, I guess my other hat of awareness, I'm a faculty liaison distance learning. So I work part-time in the distance learning department, help design online courses and help faculty with delivery of those. So I've been in this arena for about 10 years, net capacity, and teaching online for about 12 years. So I think that's enough about us. The position statement has been out there. It's been shared. We added a few things that the executive committee told us to add the last time we met back in April. So for those who are here, a couple of options is you can just chat questions in. I think we have the ability to enable you to speak on your microphone, too, if you would prefer. So we're just looking for any of the participants that are here that might have questions, rationale, even some wording or some things that they think they'd like to see changed or justified. That would be great if anybody could go ahead and chat those in. And as far as, I know Pat's in control of the statement, so if you want him to scroll anywhere down further on the statement, if you're currently reading it, go ahead and just let us know that. And Pat, do we hit the link to this position, this current draft from our website? I don't know if I can get to it right here, if somebody has that, I think, I'll have to make that a chat.
I don't know whether that it is. I mean, it probably is. How to get to it really quickly? I can, I do have the email list of the attendees. I could send it out after the meeting. It's two pages. I can scroll through it here. Would those of you prefer me to email it real quickly, or are we okay from here? Beverly's saying she can get it from the email blast.
Yeah, maybe Julie could, because when they posted it for the, before the webinar, they made it a public link, I think. So I don't know if Julie, if you could dig around on the AMATIC website and find that link to this position draft, the draft of it. Otherwise, I can pop out and do that, too. But we already had a good comment here, a good question from Nancy. It says, I think the statement is very good, quite thorough on weaknesses in the paragraph on student and instructor expectations. I think we need something about an expectation for faculty to be present in an online class. So, see here.
So Nancy, is this, what's on the screen? Is this the area you're referring to? And it looks like Beverly has copied the link in the chat area. Okay, lines 23 to 26.
Can you go down to the next page there, Pat? Okay, so maybe go back up, I'm sorry.
Let me, if that's too small, let me know, and I can make it bigger, but we can get more on the screen this way.
Maybe go put the whole first page on, if you, or a little more of the first, there we go. Cool. All right, so I'll just read that part. Students enrolled in DE mathematics courses should be active learners who are strongly motivated and self-disciplined. They need to participate in class activities consistently, interact with the instructor and other students regularly in a substantive way, turn the course, enter the course zone sign, communication of these vital expectations that come on the instructor and the college. So I think I see what they're saying here. They want more expectations. That's really kind of mostly on the students with a little bit on the instructor there. So a little more expectations for the faculty member is, I think that's what she's wanting. Yeah. Cool. So let me see here. So Nancy, do you want to, do you want to just maybe make a few, do you want to make a few audible suggestions, or do you want to type a few in, some other things you would like to have that statement say as expectations for faculty? Say, being present? I think one, one, one area we focused mostly on is, since they design and delivery, and not necessarily on kind of like the, what we'd call the human resource aspects of the distance learning. But we, I mean, obviously, we allude to it here, so.
So faculty presence, you know, is important, and we have to make sure that, you know, classes aren't just, you know, faculty, instructors not pushing the go button and just monitoring it, that they're truly involved, that there's real faculty presence, there's communication between the instructor and the entire class and the instructor and individual students. You know, that could be under the expectations, could also be mentioned in the training, that first bullet under planning, support, and maintenance.
Pat, were you going to that second page real quick? I'm just curious about something. Yeah, so the idea of regular and substantive, right? Interaction, something like that? Nancy, does that sound like something you'd like to see in there?
I like that term, the active and student learning. So you're not just putting out one-way announcements, you're actually following, you know, student discussions or responding to student questions.
Present, active, okay. I think it's a really good suggestion. I think we had gone down that path a few times.
We did.
Yeah, remember that? But I think that explicitly stated in there seems to make sense, you know? So I think, I think our subcommittee could definitely put something in that expectations area for faculty with, as far as that, you know, something about regular substantive, or being present, or active, or engaging the learners, something like that. I think we could definitely add something like that.
So I muted myself because I have this fan going, and I don't know if that's a problem.
That's okay on this end.
Okay.
No, you're fine. So Nancy had throughout a course, instructor involvement in the course through dialogue with students, ability to assist students in active student learning. So. And so maybe. Yeah, so I'm thinking, maybe Nancy, I think that's awesome. And maybe before we move forward with anything, I know you've been able to participate sometimes in some of these things. Maybe we could include you in on that and work on the word smithing as our, as we do with our subcommittee and add that in there. Would that be something you'd be interested in?
If I can jump in just a second, if I'm reading this right, I've noticed a lot of the chats are from people to all panelists.
Yes.
At the bottom of the chat, if everybody could go to the to dropdown and make it all panelists and attendees. I'm thinking some of these comments are just being seen by the panelists and not from everybody in the, in the webinar.
Oh, thank you, Pat. Yeah, I'm surprised it's not the default.
So Nancy, could you repost your?
Yeah, repost that, would you, Nancy?
Because it looked like it just went to the panelists. And Jim just said that the link provided does not match the active draft. And can someone check that? I'm afraid to click too much since I'm recording my screen. I don't want to.
Yeah. Kind of locked in on this into.
Yeah, the link provided looks like it's the fourth draft.
Hmm. All right, so let me, Dan, do you want me to open up the link provided?
No, if it's not the right one, that's, this is all we're going to see anyway, so.
So the one that's on the screen is the correct version, then?
Yeah. Um, I think I posted it in the ITLC Google group, so I don't know if anyone wants to, Anne, if you want to dig out there and see if you can find it.
Yeah, that's what I, I was just going to upload it to my Google Drive and then send the link.
Okay. So I think I put in the, in the post there with the, with this draft out there last month. Or I guess it had been maybe early May when we had our last subcommittee meeting. There's another link there, so. So Nancy, thank you for suggesting that. I think that's, that's a really good thing to put in, to add to that. And Anne, what do you think about also? I know we could determine whether that might be a good formatting thing to maybe bullet some of those things as well.
Yeah.
So we might make that change when we get together again. How's that sound?
It sounds good.
That list of expectations. What do you, what do you guys think about splitting out expectations for students and instructors? That be, instead of putting them in the same area? All right, thanks, Anne, for posting that. Good job.
Let me know if that's not right, if that doesn't open.
So far, we've got a very good suggestion for faculty expectations with regard to presence and interaction with the, with the students. And that's definitely something I think we should address. Yeah, separating Julie's, yeah, that idea of splitting them out into maybe student expectations and instructor expectations. That seems, so we can just take that list and split it and make it a little more thorough. Split the list of expectations. I got that on my notes. Cool. All right, Anne, it looks like it worked. Good job. As people are reading through it, is if there's something else that you'd like to talk about, or there's something that didn't seem quite right, or like add to or take away, please, please suggest. So line 34 there alludes to what we were talking about a little bit. But I think being more explicit, because that's referring specifically to the design. The other one would actually be expectations and the participants, which is really the, what we call the three, three pegstool. Content design, student, faculty, and those three all have, those are the, if one, if one falls away, then it hurts a lot. So students have their part, faculty have their part, and then the design and content has also that part. So obviously, we're focusing primarily on design, because it's obviously the one that you can most have a say in upfront. Students not as much, and faculty, but we also have all those expectations for training. And I like the idea of adding the engagement piece for faculty expectations on that on top of the ones of the students, so that makes sense. So far, I'm really glad there's not 100 comments. Line 27, design and content. Yeah, so this is, of course, for. I'm not sure. What do you guys think? Should we add something besides for that title of instructional design? I think as far as objectives and content, we're not differentiating that from any course. So I think if, I think that's why we just left it for DE specific position. We're just only looking at the thing that would be addressed, because we're assuming the content is the same. As far as the same objectives and everything, so. See here.
Nan, just give me just a moment, and I'll put your mic on.
Okay, good. Jim had a comment on line 36. Is a bullet in number 30 is an attribute. If not, could it be rewritten to make it an attribute?
Okay, can I say something now?
Yeah, go ahead, Nan.
Okay, so when I read instructional design, you are talking more about, you're talking about design and the content. So design of an online course, distance education course is one thing, the content, the objectives, all that is one thing else. You could have a beautiful design, but very rundown with no content. So that's why I'm saying that line 27, it shouldn't just be instructional design. It's design and the content, or maybe because first, design has to come and then the content. Because just by saying design, it seems that that's the most important part. So that's my concern.
Yeah, because that line 30, the course design addresses established course competencies with appropriate quality and mathematical rigor. So that is dealing, obviously, with content, right? So.
But line 36, you're talking about the course tools, about navigation. So I don't know if there's any part, because sometimes in order for students to get to something in a course, they have to go click, 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 and students, they don't like it. So it has to be very straightforward so that with minimal number of clicks for them to get to a desired course content. So that's why maybe, I don't know if we should separate the content and the instructional content and design, because you really are only talking about the design on number, on line 36. But on line 30, when you say the course design addresses established course competencies with appropriate quality, that's really your content. I don't know, how could that be your design? I don't know.
Yeah, I think I understand what you're saying there.
So I think in an online, the reason I pasted that into the chat box is, you know, in an online course, there's a lot of overlap content and just the presentation. So, you know, I think a lot of people think that's kind of part and parcel when you say instructional design for an online course specifically. But. So I guess I'm having trouble understanding.
No, I would not want it to say instructional design for online. It's just my concern is that maybe that line 27 should say instructional design and content, because you're not just talking about design there. You're talking more about content than design.
Yeah, and these are four, or these five bullets are not the exhaustive list. They're just kind of like, for sure, we should have these things if you look at 2029. I think that, I don't know, that seems like, it seems okay to me, but.
Okay, Nancy added an alternate wording for line 36, and Jim had mentioned it as an attribute. Would that wording satisfy everybody?
That's what I was thinking, yeah.
Yeah, course tools and activities. Yeah, looks good. I'll be taking a picture of that. Cool. So I think, yeah, rewording of line 36 there. Influence and to support learning objectives. Cool. And I think that suggestion that we put instructional design and content seems reasonable, right? Because we're kind of addressing both issues here, aren't we? Kind of like the how and the what, aren't we? Or not? I'm going to, that's something I think we should discuss further. How's that sound?
Sounds good.
Here, instructional. Design. And then put in content as a question mark, right?
Yeah, that's how, that's what I.
Yeah, yep. That's a good, two really good suggestions there. Let's see, the word design needs to be capitalized. Yeah, that seems like it should be. Thank you. And the great thing is, we do our damage on this document, and then we send it to our editor to clean it up. Wendy does a good job, so I'll put that up there, too. Very good. Um, I like, yeah, those are great. Is there, did we seem to at least discuss those two things about re-titling that and then cleaning up line 36? I know Jim had mentioned something before about 36. I think that, that addressed that as well, right, Jim? Okay, cool. All right. This is the most exciting webinar ever. Don't put this on YouTube. It's go viral. But it's good. It's good that we're doing it. That's two really awesome suggestions already, so. Well, my daughter's playing the state golf tournament today. Should I talk about that? Start off horrible, fell apart, got it back together. So I'm kind of curious. She's probably right now. She's a freshman, so she's learning a lot right now. I'm afraid she's going to be better than me already, though. Which is good.
We've still got 25 minutes left on the schedule. Are people still looking through it or are we done with comments? I don't want to cut it off early. Here we go. Are there titles on lines 11 and 22? They need to be capitalized.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay.
Um.
Yeah.
I I don't know if we want to talk about this topic here about the intellectual property of material that are taught at distance. So.
Yeah, I think is that covered in the OER position statement stuff? Or not? I don't know.
Well, I I mean, with the OER, it is it is material that is created for the public to use. But if when a faculty creates materials for a course that that faculty is teaching. Is this the intellectual property of the faculty, even though they are using the the everything, the computer, internet, everything that's provided by the school? Can the material be used without their permission by the school? I mean, there's all these questions that need to be addressed. And I think we are about at that juncture. You know, that maybe it can be answers, because I'm certain many of us have confronted with this issue. And the answer that comes back to us is that, oh, yes, there is a policy, but you never see a policy from the school. So.
Yeah, our school is never had one, unfortunately. So they're they're working on it right now. But essentially, anybody who's been paid to develop an online course has no rights to it. So school owns them. That's what the lawyers say anyway. So yeah.
But maybe a statement saying that at least with the permission of, I know they they own it. But maybe if they want to use the material, it should be with the permission of the person who had developed it. I don't know. This is how I that's what I was told. And I was put in such a situation about last year. And that's what I was told. And it I received apologies for this happening. Because the person who had used it just wanted to get into my course, just browse through it. But ended up, I found out that the permissions were changed. And so that person was able to basically copy some of the material that I had developed and without my permission. And then it was brought to the attention of my superiors and they apologized for this and said that this will never ever happen. And that, you know, there are policies and stuff, but I never saw a policy. And I understand there is no such policy. But maybe, you know, a permission with the permission of the person who had developed all these, that should be done, not behind their back. That's how I think.
So that would, that applies to any course, not not online specific. I mean, any content can be uploaded to my course hero or something, or presented as your own. So I wonder if that does, if that belongs here, if that belongs somewhere else. If it's broader than outside the scope of justice.
This sounds a lot like, kind of like copyright law kind of stuff.
Exactly. Well, I mean, for those who teach face to face class, no one you know, you just go to class, you give your handouts, blah, blah. But then your your handouts could be uploaded by the students, right? But I'm talking about faculty actually using. So it's like someone does the work and someone else uses it. Without their permission, so. I don't know.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I guess I don't know enough. I just based on based on what I've been, the only thing I know about is pretty much the the design of an online course. If someone, if you've been paid to design it, you have no rights to it at all. So.
Yes, if you are paid.
And if they don't want to ask you to use it, they don't have to. So.
Right. Only if you are paid.
Yes.
But when you are not paid, that's a different matter, right?
Um, maybe, maybe not. It's up to each school and their unions and their policies and.
But I think that's this is kind of beyond the scope of this. I agree with Nancy.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just thought I threw the idea.
I mean, that's a good idea, but it applies to, I think, other, because any material nowadays that people create, whether it's for an online course or a seated course. It's going to be, you know, it's just a digital form somewhere, right?
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, I think that's it's irrelevant. Hey, made this more exciting. Good job.
So Matthew had a question, came in about the same time as this.
Yeah.
Does this statement include courses taught across video in addition to online?
Yeah. So if we look at our definition there. One or more technologies deliver instruction to students who are separated from the instructor. Support regular substantive interaction with the students and the instructor synchronously or asynchronously. So would a video course count? I would say yes. So we left that that definition that we, I don't know, what's it cited from? I can't remember. It's a bullet. It's the footnote one. What is footnote one?
National Center for Education Statistics.
Yeah. We we came up with our own. We looked at a couple, two or three different ones, and we landed on this one because it seemed to be the the most like exactly, video course counts, right? So it's that. Essentially, when there's a separation between the instructor and the students, whatever that is. So this, yeah, so that would encompass all synchronous and asynchronous type delivery as well. So.
So Matthew, does that answer your concerns? You had a follow up question is, are we focusing too much with online? In the statement, are you talking about the entire position statement or a certain portion?
Okay. Yeah, I think the what would call the the video or correspondence courses would be in direct violation of this statement, probably, because that's kind of the opposite of what this says. Yeah. Yeah.
Hi, sorry for that. So I guess where my question comes from is one of the things that my college is looking at is courses taught, you know, from from one campus to another, live synchronously. But through video. And again, you know, I think there is a huge focus on online education and the statement, I think, really, really applies to those. But as some of these other technologies are coming up, again, is the statement as flexible as we need it to be for those other things? Do we want to really focus out online only because that's where, really, I would say the majority of this is coming from? Just those sorts of questions.
Oh, yeah. That's a great, great comment. I think we're very careful about these. We're using the word distance education throughout. And I think those synchronous online courses fall under this guise as well. Yeah. So I don't know. If you think about that type of course, is this, does this statement hurt it or help it? Or what do you think?
When I think so our wording in the first four lines, I think that would include, that that would seem like that would pertain to what he's talking about.
Yeah, for sure.
Or like streaming a seated class to somebody sitting remotely really is an extension of a seated class.
Yeah.
Right? So he's a good point.
Yeah. And I think I think it's good that the executive committee had us put that line five, six and seven stuff in there. Because whether it's seated or not, it's advocates student engagement, right? And that we put successful online learning environments. I think that's about the only, is that the only place we really have that in there? No. So maybe we could get rid of the word online there. What do you think about that in line seven?
So again, I guess my my point is that, you know, I feel like a lot that we're writing in this position statement is specifically thought of when you're thinking of an online course. And again, just going back to are is this really a position statement for online courses? Do we want it to be just kind of the general one? And and I'm not advocating one way or the other. Just sure I want to be mindful of that. Thank you.
Yeah, no, that's a, that's a really good thing. So like if we were like in line seven, if we remove the word online. That's, I think we quoted that maybe directly out of, yeah, out of impact. Yeah.
Yeah, I think we would probably need to read through the rest with a closer eye with, you know, that this context in mind. Does everything else apply or not?
Yeah. Because I think that is it? I think that might be the only time we explicitly say online learning, isn't it?
I think so.
That's a, I think that's a really good.
Yeah, that's the only place.
Yeah, but I think that when you read it with that idea that Matthew said it, that, you know, rings different now, I think. So that's, I'm going to be cognizant of. Well, I think line five and six help kind of couch that. And then the next line goes a little deeper into specifically into online. Right? Because it says provides leadership improving mathematic education regardless of the delivery method. And then we cite that line right out of there about specifically online learning environments. And we kind of back up again to talking about DE in general as becoming more prevalent. So hopefully it's walking a line there that allows.
I guess line 17, so well trained support staff for the learning management system. That that kind of, you know, that's kind of an online specific thing.
Yes, yeah. And but but the synchronous online would fit under the other D specific system. So.
Yeah.
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 Matthew, what do you think? Is that, is it, are we going too far down that path of explicit online? Or are we not allowing that more broad diversity of delivery methods could be encompassed in here?
So there really wasn't anything that jumped out to me that, you know, as I got said, again, it's more of just as this position statement goes forward. To me, I would include, I would say that first line does include those the synchronous online sort of courses through video. So just be mindful of it in the future. So thank you all.
No, it's good. And I'm glad we actually put that explicitly in the definition, or that's in that that definition we chose is explicitly in there. So it helps think about those types of delivery methods as well. But yeah, it's a, it's, there's a broad range we're trying to cover. So it's a lot of things that could could be done. Yeah, that's thanks for bringing that up. All right. Well, we've got some really good suggestions here. Talk about that titling of instructional design and maybe add the word content with that and then talk about faculty and student expectations, potentially splitting them into different lists. Getting that verbiage down better for those, maybe make them bulleted. So that's what I've got listed in my notes right now. Is that somebody had, have we missed anything? Yeah. So like you said, place online with DE. I think we quoted that. So if we quote that, should we put it in quotes? If we, if that's right out of impact? Or we just reference it? Maybe we should double check that again. I would, I'll write that down. Okay? If we should, so in line seven, like six, seven, eight. We'll just, we're going to double check, because if it is quoted, should we quote it? You know what I mean?
On that footnote.
Or just paraphrase, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
I don't know. It's been like a whole, like four weeks since we wrote it. That's something else we can look at, though. So it looks like we've got three major, kind of three or four major things to really look at. Before, before we get it back to the executive committee again. Executive board, I'm sorry. All right. Anybody else? Everybody, I think it's nap, it's nap time, isn't it? Isn't everybody sleeping right now? Okay, cool. Yeah, I like that. Yep. If it's a quote, you make it a quote, otherwise change it to DE to be consistent. I think that's a great idea. We'll, we'll double check and see what it says there right out of the document. Oh, no, I just, we just, I can't remember if we paraphrased or not. We'll look into it.
Okay, we're down to just a few minutes left in the allotted time. Are there any other questions or comments or concerns?
I'm going to put my email. People can contact me directly as well. There's my email, dgpetrock@dmac.edu. So if they want to even participate. So we're going to have another follow up subcommittee meeting on this. If you'd like to be invited to that. Just to participate, we invite that as well. Or if you want to have other comments later, or if somebody watches the recording, they can also get ahold of me there. And I can talk to them individually about rationale and process we went through and listen to suggestions between now and. listen to suggestions between now and the fall conference. If there's something we need to work on.
Hey, Dan or Ann, anything else? Any, anything else from anybody? Looks like we might be through with this. Let me put the PDF down and bring up the final comments again. Okay, so thank you all for participating in the, in the webinar. If you're not already a member of AMatic, there's a link here that you can click on to become a member. We are on Facebook, American Mathematical Association of Two-Year Colleges, so search and like that, a lot of good information there. And then the recordings of this webinar and other past webinars can be found at the following link. Depending on the transition between here to the web coordinator, may take up to one to two weeks to produce an upload. But I believe I'm supposed to notify everyone when it does get uploaded, that attendance, so you can go back and watch it or share it with others. And then we have the link here for the evaluation of the webinar. And if you need email confirmation, you have the QR code. And then the QR code, I believe, goes to the, also goes to the survey, and then if you need confirmation, there is a section at the end of the survey to request a confirmation certificate for attendance. And if there are any other questions, I'll be happy to answer them. Thank you, Dan. Thank you, Ann, for being here and helping out with the discussion on the position statement. Anything else from anyone?
I think that's it for me. Thank you, Pat, for doing this, and is this your first one?
Yes, it is.
Good job.
Well, thank you. You, you made it easy to work with.
All right, thanks for everybody.
I'm going to stop the recording then, and we will.